Good morning.
All right, read the adjournments also.
No, there's no adjournments.
Read the list of adjournments.
Oh, from the other day?
Or I can do it.
I got it. Again, from the yesterday, you mean, that we read?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for April 7, 2020 10 a.m. Please do not call in. So the adjournments for April 7, 224708 BZ, 3454 Nostrand Avenue, Brooklyn, 34312 BZ, 570 East 21st Street, Brooklyn, 55137, 23302 Northern Boulevard, Queens, and 33478 BZ, 23320 Northern Boulevard, Queens, 7204, 14154 Northern Boulevard, Queens, 201998, 2432 Doralman Street, Brooklyn, 27134 BZ, 311 Adams Avenue, Staten Island. Those cases are adjourned or postponed and new dates will be set at a later time. So we are now starting with the public review session for April 7, 2020 10 a.m. The following cases will be discussed. 2019 193BZ and 2-10BZ, both for 310 East 14th Street, Manhattan. New cases, 2018 142BZ, 204 2346 Road, Queens, 2019 187BZ, 205 Bricktown Way, Staten Island, and 2017 265BZ, 318320 54th Street, and companion case 2020-2318320 54th Street, Brooklyn. So I'll call 2019 193BZ and 210-BZ, 310 East 14th Street, Manhattan.
Again, just to repeat, this is the review session. We should have no callers waiting.
So the case I just called is 2019 193BZ and companion case 2-10BZ, 310 East 14th Street, Manhattan. This is a public review. Please do not call in.
Changes have to the proposed signage. The statement that signs A and B will be non-illuminated, needs to include indirect illumination, so I want to make sure that there's no light shining on the sign from a distance. There's also a statement in the cover letter, again focused on the signs, that the proposed A and B signs are, quote, "analogous to prior BSA approvals and hospital conditions throughout the community." I don't know what the support for that statement is because they're very high up there. I don't know which signs were approved by BSA that are of that size. I'd like to know what the relevance of the comparison to the Lenox Hill Hospital sign is, which, by the way, I live very close to an ambulance that seemed to have no trouble finding in spite of its mid-block location and no identifying sign on the roof, so I'm not really understanding where that's coming in in the discussion. On the so-called, quote, "dimming of the illuminated signs," signs C, D, E are three stories tall, so which shine directly into the windows of the residences along Second Avenue at the second and third floors. Those shines should be turned off after 10:00 p.m., not dimmed or reduced to a, not dim, either that or they should be reduced to a complying height. I have to say, you should try living with an illuminated sign outside your window all night. It's not, it's not an easy thing to do, nor should anyone have to. And I actually don't understand why they need to be that tall, but certainly not that tall and illuminated at night. The, with respect to the impact of the project, so this is, has to do with a letter that was discussed at the last hearing, with respect to the impact of the project relative to Seeker and the February 5, 2020 letter to the Department of Health from Advocates for Justice. The applicant contends that the only areas of environmental concern under Seeker are hazards to human health. However, there's also a socioeconomic impact analysis as well as a community facility analysis, which if triggered would need further study. The Seeker technical manual includes healthcare facilities and states, "Healthcare facilities include public proprietary and nonprofit facilities that accept public funds and that are available to any member of the community. Generally, a detailed assessment of service delivery is conducted only if a proposed project would affect the physical operations of or access to and from a hospital or a public health clinic where a proposed project would create a sizable new neighborhood where none existed, or not, or where a proposed project would create a sizable new neighborhood where none existed before." So I think the issue that was raised from that, the letter, is about the other location on 16th Street, which is being taken down and therefore elimination of hospital beds. I think the, which obviously is having an effect on this, on the healthcare facility, and I think that that is what the letter is referring to and that we can ignore. There are open environmental issues on this in any event, right? Section 312 of the technical manual deals with displacement of existing facilities and requires Health and Hospitals or Department of Health review in certain circumstances, which says if the proposed project would displace or alter a hospital or public health clinic, the analysis should document the, should do the following things, right? So this, this project is the result, or let's say is connected to the displacement or alteration of a hospital, in fact, is an alteration of a hospital. So I'm not sure that the Seeker analysis is complete, has handled all of the areas of environmental concern. And then my also ask, under the current circumstances, might Health and Hospitals be rethinking its entire set of assumptions about the appropriate number of beds in operation in the city, which have been reduced significantly over the last 20 years? And might then the certificate of need for this application be modified or still be valid? That's a question about everything we're learning over this very unfortunate period where there's a shortage of hospital beds and ICUs and so on. Would they be considering modifying what it is hospitals are building? Then we had Seeker issues. We have open Department of Transportation, Department of Health, and, but do have the other sign-offs, and we need notes added to the plans regarding all the environmental commitments. Once those reviews are final, Fire Department issued a letter of no objection. And yeah, it says, let's say, "Plans and applications shall be filed to the Bureau of Fire Department Prevention's tech management." So in other words, they're expecting further submissions related to the project. And those are my comments. So I will recognize Commissioner Shonda.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I reviewed the revised submission, and I thought the wayfinding analysis was very responsive to the comments that were raised at the last hearing. They have significantly reduced signs A and B. And the other signs that were there, we had never raised any issues of it, and I think it is very consistent with many of the hospitals that's been built recently, like the NYU Hospital, the New York Cornell While, MSK, even the downtown one. So it is very consistent in the way they have used to sign it. So I really did not see any issues with them, and I did not have any additional comments on any of the additional submissions.
Okay. Mr. Ottley Brown?
Yes, hi. I reviewed the signage analysis of the complying and the signage that would be in the variance, and I'm fine with it.
Okay. Commissioner, where is he? Sorry. I'm having trouble finding Commissioner Sheta. Kirk, could you move him to the top? Yeah, okay, Commissioner Sheta?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I believe they addressed the signage issue, and they were responsive to that. The, I believe the only remaining issue now is to resolve the concerns from the DOT regarding the, like, the relocation of the compactor and the conflict with the pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk. So if they respond to that, I believe I'm okay with it, and I'm ready to vote on it.
Mm-hmm, okay. And Commissioner Shaveta, I can unmute. Here we go.
Thank you, Chair. I share your concerns with the illumination. And other than that, I really am impressed with this, the submissions. I think they've been a great applicant. All the material I found to be really responsive and addressed the issues that we, we, we asked.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Yeah, I agree. It's been really, I said this at the last hearing. It's been a real pleasure to work with this applicant. She was very responsive. And Ms. Benke, her hand up. Go ahead.
Hi. So the State Department of Health was reviewing the newest, the latest EAS, which included the community facility chapter, and this morning they emailed me and said they have no comments that they will be submitting.
Okay, great.
And DOT is still open.
Okay. Okay. So I, question about that, only because this was raised in that comment from a member of the public. In the, in the community facility chapter, was it a, did it recognize that there was a, the other hospital? I don't know if it's considered a part of this application or segmentation or anything, but was it acknowledged that this is related to?
It was acknowledged in the EAS. This is part of the system. I'm sure the applicant can expand upon that.
Okay. Great. And I see Commissioner Shonda has her.
I wasn't able to hear Ms. Benke's last statement regarding DOTs.
Oh, okay.
Regarding?
The, you, after the state, you said the state reviewed it, and then you said another agency also reviewed it. I missed that last part.
Oh, DOT is still reviewing the, the EAS.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great.
And that's the last outstanding review, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Move on?
Um, yeah.
Jamba has her hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, sorry.
That's leftover. Okay, now you put it back.
Sorry.
Okay. All right.
New case item number three, 2018 142BZ, 204 2346 Road, Queens.
Hey, again, there should be nobody calling in. So far, no one has called in. That's good. Okay. We have proof of service of initial application to officials. We have notice of hearing to official. Community recommends deny. One abstention, abstention. This community board provided meeting minutes to us, but it isn't really clear to me why they rejected the proposal. Maybe something about being able to occupy the cellar?
I think that's what it was. There was some, some information in there about some possibility of illegal or occupancy in the cellar.
Yeah, yep, that's what they said.
Yeah, no, but it was hard to see if that's the reason they objected, sort of kind of, it was general minutes, but anyway, we can take it for that. The uniqueness argument in the statement of facts, actually, unless I looked at the wrong one, seems to be missing, although there is a statement that it will be provided, sort of, it says, "The following is the uniqueness," and getting ready for a list, and then there's no list. There was a stack of exhibits that are supposed to be supporting the uniqueness argument, but there is no explanation for what they mean. They need to establish that there is no common ownership with the adjacent property and has never been since '61. They provided a chain of title for adjacent properties, so they obviously did that work, but they didn't explain it. When I looked at the chain of title, I don't see that there was held in common ownership with anyone. Photos show that someone has parked either a ski-mobile or something like that, probably not a ski-mobile, one of those the thing you'd use on water, but is it being used or rented by a neighbor? Like, who's that? Why is that there? That, that's all going to whether it's being held in common ownership effectively. They need to show that a zero lot line building of the proposed height and with a reduced front yard on clear view fits within neighborhood character. The as of right is actually incorrect, the drawing. The front yard regulations are 15 feet and 10 feet for a corner lot. And, and what that long clear view avenue is actually, that's a front yard, not a side yard, and labeling it as a side yard, which is one reason I think they have the wrong dimensions required for clear view. So the as of right is actually much worse than what they're showing. And also, there's a five-foot and a 20-foot side yard requirement for a corner lot. The proposed set actually does have the correct zoning data, except that it describes that clear view as a side yard and not a front yard. So that needs to be corrected. I think, you know, this is actually, oh, excuse me, even though they didn't provide, even though they didn't provide a clear uniqueness analysis, it seems like they can get there. The site seems to have been created by the cutting through of clear view avenue. So they, but they do need to show us that it's one of only a few lots that are similarly burdened and vacant. And the, what they're asking for, I think, is rather minimal in the range of things. It's just that they have a zero lot line building, and it's not clear whether that's something that would be out of character with the neighborhood. And so I saw, I give it to Commissioner Shonda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was looking at the uniqueness study that was submitted dated January 22, and in that it has the maps showing all the sites within the radius that are less than 21 feet wide, and then that, which ones are pre-1961 non-compliant building, and sites under common ownership, and then winnowing down to the sites that are extremely narrow. So I thought that analysis was very helpful in my ability to determine that the, this site definitely suffers from that uniqueness, and I did not have an issue with it. I had similar comments. First of all, with regards to the waiver, the DOB objection, I think, needs to add the front yard waiver. As you pointed out, Madam Chair, the, this is a corner lot, so there are two front yards required, and the waiver, DOB waiver does not refer to the front yard waiver. And, and the side yard analysis in the DOB objection sheet is incorrect because it would require, as 20 feet plus 40 feet would meet the total width of the required, you know, the total width, side yard width of 13 feet. It would, however, still require a waiver of minimum five-foot width. So the side yard waiver that is being requested is not for the total width. It's really for the minimum five-foot width that would be required for the side yard. So as you mentioned, the plan should be revised for both as of right and the proposed to indicate the proper waivers that are being requested. And the as of right development will almost be infeasible. If you were to build, if you have to maintain a 10-foot front yard, also on Clearview Expressway, and a 15-foot on the street, it would make the site even less buildable, I think. So the plan, going back to the plan, the, it's not a very, there is a little bit of confusion in the way one reads the plan, and that is only when one is looking at the section Z007, one realizes that the cellar is running the entire length of the property and is connected to the garage from below grade. However, when one looks at the cellar floor plan, Z101, it does not show that connection. It shows the portion of the area in the rear going up to the garage as an unexcavated. So I, I think, as Ms. Mathias pointed out, I think there was a concern with the community with regards to the cellar being used as a, another unit. And, and, and Arben Dale Association also had written a letter to that effect. They definitely do not want to see a second unit there. So we do need further clarification on that. And with regards to the plan, I also have another question there. I noticed there's a staircase that's going up from the patio in the rear to the top of the garage. I do not know why that is needed. And it should be eliminated, I, I think, if there is not a need for it.
Wait, what should be eliminated?
If you look, go to zero, Z102. If you look at the first floor plan, there is a patio in the front and the patio next to the living room. And then there's a set of staircase that goes up from the patio over the garage, onto the garage roof.
Right.
I'm not sure why that is needed.
Well, it's another outdoor space. Why not? An outdoor space.
I think it's more of the, I don't know if that's an issue of the community having an issue with somebody having an outdoor space at a elevation that is higher than grade, which is backing up against their rear yard. That's just a question I'm putting there.
Oh, but it's the equivalent of a balcony on the second floor.
Fair, yeah, fair.
Second floor, why can't you have a, it's quite common actually to have roof decks, right? Especially where you have limited amount of rear yard.
Okay, okay. All right, then I will take that back.
So I, I didn't see the uniqueness study, so I apologize to the applicant. I missed that urban cartographics study was provided. It's just in the statement of facts. It's missed reference to, you read the statement of facts, and it says, it cause, colon, and then nothing. Okay. Anything else?
I did not have any additional comment, and I do agree with it, that the site does have the challenges of being built as a pride, and I think it's a reasonable proposal. Everything is all complying otherwise.
Mm-hmm. So the cellar only has two clear-story windows, so it's not quite the same as the cellars that we see, is full, windows all the way around, and it does have a direct entrance from the, from the outside, I guess, does it? I don't know. No.
It's not very clear graphically where that staircase in the rear is leading to, because I don't see it on the first floor plan.
Yes, you, you access the staircase from inside the garage.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, okay, okay. Yes, I, okay, now I see where you're.
An apartment, right? So, you know, for me, it's less likely to be used that way because you're entering it unless it's not really used as a garage, but you're entering it by walking around a car, and then you're going down into the cellar.
Which doesn't seem like a practical route, because typically, if you're doing your grocery shopping, you're going to take it straight from there to the kitchen, not down to the cellar and back up to the kitchen on the first floor.
Right, but that's if.
And I think that is, that is a concern that was raised by the community and Mr. Euler, Euler's letter.
Not about going to the kitchen.
No, the fact that the staircase leading from, from the garage to the cellar could be, could result in a separate occupancy.
Right. Yeah, that, that one for me is a lot harder. I mean, most of the time that we see these cellar, clearly obvious cellars to be occupied, there's direct access to the cellar from the outside, very obviously, you know, from the outside. And then you see a three-piece bathroom that's full. This one has a three-piece bathroom, but it's teeny with a shower, so I don't know. And then, oh, and it also has access into the main house from the staircase. So, and it only has two clear-story windows, as opposed to these other ones that are clear-story windows all the way around. Anyway, that's a discussion we can have with the applicant. Okay, Commissioner Ottley Brown? Why is everything hard to find? Okay. There you go.
Okay, so having looked at both the statement and the, the uniqueness analysis, as well as looking at the radius diagram, I am convinced that this site is unique. However, unfortunately, I agree with you, it was analyzed as if it's an interior lot, when in actuality, it's a corner lot, and so that needs to be changed in both the zoning analysis and the zoning chart on the plans. Another thing that isn't clear to me is whether or not the proposed floor area is 1,541 square feet or 1,475 square feet, because there's two different numbers, one on the analysis and the other one on the zoning chart. And then to address the community board's concerns about there being illegal occupancy in the cellar, I don't really understand what it has to do with the link to the garage, like, why that would make it a possible illegal occupancy. The bottom line is, really, there's nothing you can do to control illegal occupancy at the cellar. I had a good friend who lived in our mother's cellar, and there were no windows. It was horrible, but that's where she lived. There was a door to the backyard. That was it. So people can live anywhere, and they have proven to live anywhere. If it makes the community board feel better, perhaps we ask them if they consider eliminating the garage and converting it to an open parking space. But I don't know that that would address the issue with the illegal occupancy in the cellar anyway. So those were my comments on the issue. I feel it is minimal, so I have no issues with it other than it should be reanalyzed as if it's a corner lot.
Right, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with all what is said so far. In addition to that, I believe the drawings need some, some coordination. They are confusing for, for some extent. The section identifications need to be shown on the plans. Drawing number Z-105.00 shows a section, however, it's called section AA, however, you cannot figure out where is that section located. I, I believe the unexcavated thing on the, on the plan that Commissioner Jamba mentioned is, is, it might be a taibo, but I'm not sure. On the community board's side, I believe their concern is the accessibility to the cellar, and they, they believe that it could be used illegally for, as a living space. And but I don't think this, this should be, this concern should be a reason for denying the entire, the entire case. I believe this side is, has some uniqueness in it, and, and just, if the applicant just do some minor work, they could easily prove that this, this site is, is really unique, and it's not, I, I, I believe it's not like self-created. They didn't, they didn't align the highway that they mentioned in their statement, so I believe the city did, so.
Right.
I hope, I hope the community board could, could, like, retake a look at that, and, and, and I hate, like, to consider something against the will of the community board, but I believe the applicant, I would urge the applicant to reach out to them and talk to them. Regarding the equipment on the, on the site, by the way, I believe the applicant, either the applicant or the community board mentioned that it's a landscape equipment, and it's being stored on the site. So apparently, they use the site as, as for storage of landscape equipment.
Who's using it?
The owner.
Oh, well, we can ask them, because we don't know whose equipment it is. You think it's landscape? I thought it was sports equipment, but okay, whatever. Okay, all right. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Shaveta? Just a second. Just a second, trying to unmute you. There you go.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I, I think the plan is a pretty innovative way to work with what they have, uh, and make, they make as much use of it while making such a small ask to us. Uh, you know, I, I want to know more about what the community opposite, I'd like understand it more, but I, I don't think, and it'd be great if we can silence the concerns, but I don't think it'd be fair to change this project because maybe something might, maybe they might live in the, in the basement. Because there isn't really that much indicia of this being a separate living, uh, environment. So like that, I, I think that I, I, I look forward to hear from the applicant and maybe he can set us some assurances. But it, it's not clearly, you know, we've seen projects, I think Chair said that we've seen projects where we know what this is. You know? And, and to Commissioner Otley Brown's point, um, you know, the only way that we can make sure no one's living there is, is like take, like, take the walls off, off, you know, but I, I, I think, I, I'm okay with this project.
Thank you. And, you know, we just had a case yesterday where all we could do is have block letters on the plans that say no living in the cellar, right? But meanwhile, the layout was so obvious. They had two full bathrooms down there, right? In this case, I look at it, I agree that, I think for one, I'm so delighted to see a piece of architecture finally on some of these projects, right? This is a nicely designed modernist house with a lot of innovation to take advantage of a very odd site. And, um, the idea of accessing through the, through the garage for whatever, it becomes a hobby room, you know, there's like a lot of different ways that you could be using that. I think it's quite interesting to not clog up the base of the main house with the staircase that goes downstairs or and a way to extend underneath the, the yard there to get a little more depth on it. I, I think, I think it's a good design. I'm going to recognize in order. Oh, go ahead.
No, I, I, I wanted to follow up. I think it's clear that the architect took, there was a lot of thought into this project. Um, and, and you know, before, I think, before we should, uh, modify, we should be, we should hear first from the applicant, see what they, what, what their thoughts are.
Right. So I'm going to recognize in order of hands up Commissioner Sheta and then Commissioner.
Yeah, I got the feeling that the community board is saying, oh, this is going to be a really small house and the houses in the neighborhood is not kind of that small, so we don't like it. If you read their statement, they say, we feel that these variances should be, shouldn't be granted because the lot is just too small to sustain a one family. I'm not sure if, if a lot cannot sustain one family, what could it sustain then? So they, they need, I believe they need to be mindful here. They, they need to, yes, this is, this is an existing lot. It's not created presumably. It's, it's not created by, by the owner. And, and if this is the case, what should the guy do with that lot? Just, just forget about it? I, I don't think this is a good way to think about it.
Mm-hmm, that's fair. And that's actually the reason that there are variances to grant relief when your built, your property has no value because you can't use it for anything. Because the resulting, the zoning would say you can build a three-foot wide house, which I think actually is what ends up happening here when you impose the front yard regulations. So thank you. So I'm going to recognize Commissioner Shanda.
So, um, the objections, uh, we have received two letters of objections from the community and both of them cite issues as not enough parking. Then the other one says overcrowding. There is overwhelming, uh, overburdening of utility usage. And another one says multiple dwelling of new construction will cause much more problems. So there's a complete misunderstanding of what this project is is meant for, that it is a one family and the, the cellar, the fact that cellar can be used as a second family is what's kind of adding to this confusion. And I think Mr. Euler's letter to some extent also cited similar concern as, uh, that, uh, and, and there is, by the way, there is a tractor trailer parked there now when I was there last, so, uh, not a trailer, it's one of those RV trailers, sorry.
Oh.
RV trailer. So I, I don't know whom it belongs to, uh, because if you do the Google history, uh, things, there have been things parked there over time, so we don't know if some, some neighbor is just parking there or it's with an understanding of the owner, don't know. So I think it's really good for the applicant to clarify that. And I think Mr. Euler's letter cites to the fact that this was rezoned and to allow for only one family home and and typically the homes have this dimension and this being a small one, so I think it's again, the context and what it was meant for is, and that this would disrupt that is, is a concern. And I think, um, we hear it, but I think this is a project I feel is very responsive to the community and is proposing a one-family home in a site that is absolutely encumbered with, uh, on the underlying zoning regulation. That is not self-created.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Anybody? Anybody, anybody? Okay.
Can't assume that illegal use will occur.
Right, not assume. That's a, that's case law.
Case law, can't assume.
Right, it's not fair to assume illegal use, and if we were doing that, there are so many cases. Most of these little houses would qualify for that. Okay. You can go on, Tony.
Okay, I thought Ted had a, oh, no.
Something? Was that a yes or a no? Hold, hold on, I'm unmuting you just to see if you.
No, I was just reading Mr. Euler's letter. Um, that was, that was it. I don't have a comment right now, I'm sorry.
Okay, I thought he said something before. Okay, sorry Ted, thank you.
Hand up though, your little blue hand. Do you know how to do that?
Definitely, absolutely. I will raise my hand going forward.
Okay. All right.
Okay, um, item number four, twenty nineteen one eighty-seven BZ, two oh five Bricktown Way, Staten Island. Once again, this is a review session, please do not call in.
So we have proof of service to officials and a notice of hearing to officials and neighbors. Community board recommends approval. Except that this is closed during the current situation. This would be a legalization. So under those circumstances, we would need the massage therapist licenses. We also need DOI.
We have it.
We have it? Oh, okay, um, I see.
Daryl's hand is up.
Yeah, I know, I see. I'm, I'm muting him. Sorry, just take a second. Oops. There we go.
Tony Ray mentioned, we got DOI this morning and also FDNY sent the email this morning saying no objection.
Great. Good timing. Great.
Yeah, Daryl hunted it down.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, any comments from Commissioner?
Nope.
Commissioner Otley Brown? Sorry, just a
No comment.
Okay. Commissioner Sheta? Sorry, I think it's a battle between me and Kurt. Okay, there you go.
It was me, not Kurt. I usually mute myself. No, I have no comment on that. Thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner? Shibeta, sorry.
No comment from me.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so next time, do I, I'm calling both of them together?
Yes.
Okay, so item number five, twenty seventeen two sixty-five BZ and twenty twenty-two da, two da, dash two BZ, this is for both three eighteen, three twenty, fifty-fourth Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, uh-oh. What's going on? Something weird. Something very weird. Sorry, uh, all of my notes seem to be missing. Sorry, one second, April seventy-seventh news. How very weird. How upsettingly weird. Okay, someone else start because all of my notes seem to be vanished.
So unmute Shanda, Commissioner Shanda.
Yeah.
Okay, so at the last hearing, um, uh, the, I, I think, well, the last hearing being, um, back in, uh, I think, uh, April of last year, uh, the applicant was asked to prepare a special permit application under, uh, section seventy-three dash five, uh, fifty-three for the enlargement. And the applicant has submitted, um, an application to that effect and has a DOB waiver. The, uh, there was a hearing that was held at the community board, um, and the community board voted in favor. We have the proof of initial filing of this new special permit application and also the proof of hearing notice. And the revised DOB objection specifically was for the legalization of the existing mezzanine level enlargement for a new non-conforming use. For, yeah. And, um, so the applicant went through all the findings, uh, under seventy-three fifty-three. Um, I went through the findings and it was a little difficult to follow the, um, the flow of the discussions, but I think the applicant was extremely thorough in going through every section and, uh, and responding to all the elements and the nuances of this finding. It's not a finding that we deal with very often, so, um, it did require a little bit of reading and familiarizing every aspect of it. Based on my review, um, I, I believe the applicant meets those findings. And I think we were okay with the application with regards to, um, the reinstatement, uh, um, of the previously approved variance. Uh, we were waiting for this, so I would like to hear other commissioners and chair, um, what your thoughts are on that.
Okay, Commissioner Otley Brown?
Yeah, uh, yes, hi. I feel like they did a very good job in proving all of the findings for the section seventy-three dash fifty-three special permit. They went down the list, you know, very methodically, and I think it was well done. I think it's, it's, um, the good thing about it is although it is a legalization of an extra eighteen hundred square feet, it isn't visible to anybody except the people who are actually in this actual building because it's interior and it is a mezzanine. So I, I don't think it has any effect on the surroundings. I'm fine with it.
Right. And thank you, um, Commissioner Sheta.
I, I don't have any significant comments on it. Uh, I, this is the application where we have a, a roof sign on, on top of the building, right?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not sure. I, I believe they do have an issue with the DOB on it. And, and I'm, I'm not sure about, like, they are claiming that the roof sign will continue to be used as, uh, as an accessory for, for like, uh, it's not an advertising roof sign, it's, it's like an accessory to one of the users of the building. Uh, I did look at the images from Google and, and around two thousand twelve until probably two thousand fourteen. I have seen some advertising for UTZ. I believe this is a potato chips product. And, and my question on this, was this ever been one of the tenants or the occupants in the building?
If you're talking about the sign, that, you know, that it's not actually before us. Our application is to just, is to look at the use on the interior of the building. So, um, um, it's really actually a DOB question and, um, we're not being presented with the subject of the sign and whether it's accessory and so.
If it's not, if it's not before us, I would say they should like remove any, uh, statement in the statement of fact that could be relevant. They mentioned in the statement of fact that they, their intention is to continue to use this, so I would, I would just ask them to remove that.
Okay.
You don't know, somebody put a statement in front of you and then you say nothing about it and, and later it's claimed that you saw it. And since you did in common, it's you, you, you bought it. So just take that out of the, out of the statement.
Okay. Commissioner Shibeta?
Thank you, Chair. I, um, I think they did a great job. I think they, uh, they addressed each of the points in, in special permit. I think that they, I'm satisfied with this application.
And, uh, Commissioner Shanda had her hand up again.
I, I think this was in response to Commissioner, um, uh, Sheta's comment. With regards to their making that statement on, on regarding the sign, I'm okay with it. We can always in our resolution state that the roof sign is not in our purview. It's for DOB to determine. Um, Ms. Pranga is raising her hand.
But not with a blue hand.
Hi, sorry, I somehow messed up the blue hand thing. Um, I do think there was an approval for the sign. Um, it's in the original application. It was a proposed illuminated business sign on roof of an existing non-conforming building. So I think there is a BSA approval. The resol, I know it, this is from a year ago, so probably, you know, it's not, um, fresh in everyone's mind, but there is a resolution in the original file for it.
That includes the sign.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we'll, we'll need to check that and I don't know that the applicant will have time to do that now for this hearing, but we'll need to check that.
Madam Chair, it's Carlo.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, Gel is correct. There, there was a separate, uh, variance application in the seventies for the, for a sign that had no term limit on it, and that's why, uh, it's not being considered under the eleven four eleven application or the seventy-three fifty-three application.
Uh, okay.
Thank you, Carlo.
Okay.
Yeah, I had to think about that.
Okay, it's not being considered under the twenty seventeen two sixty-five BZ, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And Commissioner Shanda?
Sorry, just wanted to finish my, uh, the UTZ sign, the prior occupant of this facility was UTC. And then I think the Venetian, uh, blind company took over, so the sign that was there belonged to the company that was using it before.
So it was excessive.
Yeah. That, that's what I remember from the prior hearings.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from anybody? Tony?
Okay, so, okay, so we want to start the regular hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So, welcome to the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for April seventh, twenty twenty. Let me read the adjournments and postponements again. Sorry, just let me get to that screen. So the adjournments and postponements for the April seventh. Were repeated yesterday, but I'll repeat them again. Two four seven oh eight BZ, three four three twelves BZ, five seventy East Twenty-first Street, five five one thirty-seven, two thirty BZ, two thirty-three oh two Northern Boulevard Queens, three three four seventy-eight BZ, two thirty-three twenty Northern Boulevard Queens, seventy-two oh four BZ, one forty-one fifty-four Northern Boulevard Queens, twenty nineteen ninety-eight, twenty-four thirty-two Jerralman Street, Brooklyn, twenty seventeen thirty-four BZ, three eleven Adam Street, Staten Island. And so now we commence with the April seventh, twenty twenty public hearing, ten AM session. And the first case is twenty nineteen one nine three BZ, twenty ten, two ten dash BZ, both with three ten East Fourteenth Street, Manhattan. And only the applicants and, and consultants for that case should be calling in.
Okay.
It's not your case, please do not call in.
And I just admitted.
Hillary is there.
Hillary, right. I don't know if any of her consultant coming. Okay, Ms. Az, Azrod? Can you hear us?
Leave it still connecting.
Okay.
Usually those videos.
Please state your name when you can hear us. Please turn off your YouTube video. Hi, Ms. Azrod, please turn off your YouTube video. Hey, you're on.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Are we ready for anyone else, Hillary?
No, it's just me.
Okay, so let me swear you in. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Okay.
Good morning, everybody. I listened in on the review session this morning and wanted to address the comments. I'll start off with the signage for signs A and B. I want to confirm that, yes, those would be completely not illuminated, no indirect illumination, no illumination whatsoever. So the plan would be to reduce those in size and also eliminate any illumination. On the chair's comments regarding C, D, and E and wanting to turn those lights off rather than just dimming them, we would ask that we be able to proceed with just dimming those, especially because we get rid of the illumination. For A and B, those signs would have a crucial wayfinding function. The sign, the blade sign that you mentioned that faces Second Avenue, it actually doesn't face any residential buildings. It faces the Verizon Building, which is a utility building. So I don't believe that there would be any impact on Second Avenue to any residential buildings in that area.
Is that true of all three of the blade signs?
No. So the blade sign on 14th Street facing east is adjacent to a residential building. That's the sign that's right next to the emergency department, the blade sign that faces towards First Avenue. But that's one of the reasons that we would suggest that the condition be that it be dimmed after a certain hour so that there would be no impact to the residential properties.
But how, how do you regulate dim so there's no impact? I mean, if, just to put this in perspective, there's a light on all night long that I can see outside of the window of my studio apartment. There's nowhere for me to go. It's not like I have another bedroom where I can go that's not facing the avenue. So.
So if you look at this part of 14th Street, and we have some photos that we included in the application of this part of 14th Street, this type of signage, yes, I will, you know, admit that obviously we're asking for a waiver for it because it is above the typical height limit. But this is a very bright, active part of 14th Street. So I think that if anything, perhaps we could ask the board to allow us to eliminate the illumination after a certain time for that particular sign that faces the residential building. But perhaps allow the dimmer function for the other two blade signs that do not have any adjacency to residential uses.
Okay, so that's actually the issue. That's what I'm talking about, that after 10:00 PM, the sign that at the third floor, because can't, you know, regulations allow for a sign to go to the 20 whatever foot height, right? That, that the sign that has three, is three stories and faces a residential window, that needs to be turned off.
Okay, so just to be clear, the board would be amenable to allowing the dimmer function on the two signs, the two blade signs that do not face the residential use. So the ones that face Second Avenue and the Verizon Building, but eliminating illumination after 10:00 PM for the one that faces the residential building east on 14th Street.
Right. Would you know which letters those are?
Um, that would be C, D, and E.
Right.
So I believe C would be, let me just pull it up here. I believe that C is the one that's on 14th Street. Facing the residential building, but I'm just loading the wayfinding study, Attachment K now.
Okay.
So that would be. I'm sorry, that would be sign D. So C and E are the two blade signs that do not face the residential uses. Those are the ones along Second Avenue. D would be the sign that we would turn off after 10 o'clock.
Okay. Good. Deal.
Great. And just to quickly address the questions regarding our statements in the cover letter regarding signage. We wanted to address the differences between Lenox Hill and the applicant site based upon comments at the prior hearing, asking us to look at both NYU Langone and Lenox Hill. And so we just wanted to express the differences. And when we mentioned the case that was quite analogous to the signage that's being requested here, it is the NYU Langone case. The blade signs are actually identical and designed by the same consultant who worked on the NYU Langone case. So that is the case that we are citing to when discussing the similarities between the signage. And if you look at even current Google Images of NYU Langone signage, the height, the illumination, and the other features are extremely analogous to what we're proposing here.
Okay.
Turning to the seeker, the outstanding seeker issues. We did get additional comments from DOT late last week, as Tracy had mentioned. And we responded to those comments on Friday. We made a submission. So we do understand that they haven't yet replied on those and that those are still outstanding. And just to briefly address the letter that you mentioned. So I believe that we're speaking about the same letter from the community organization that was discussing some of the issues at the 16th Street site. After the date of that letter, that same community organization had filed a lawsuit against the Department of Health in relation to some of the certificate of need applications at the 16th Street site. And after the date of that letter, the segmentation issues that were subject to the litigation were actually dismissed by the court. So that lawsuit has now been settled. And so we just wanted to make sure that that was noted on the record.
Okay, I just to understand that, you know, it's like us juggling the seeker review against this letter, right? So the court dismissed, what, the challenge to the certificate of need? Is that?
Correct, correct. So in regard to the segmentation issues for the certificate of needs, that part of the lawsuit was in DOH's favor and dismissed.
Okay, okay.
And I believe that those were the open issues. We will, of course, once environmental review is complete, add any of the notes to the plans that are needed. But I think it likely makes sense to hold off on that until the DOT review is finalized.
Great. All right then. Let's see if there's any speakers. So are any other comments from commissioners? Okay, so now I'd like to ask if there are any members of the public who would like to speak on this? If you would like to speak on.
2019-193BZ and 2-10BZ, 310 East 14th Street. This is Mount Sinai.
Yeah, so please call 646-558-8656. We'll give a couple of, let's say, 30 seconds for dial in. Because I know there's a time delay. Okay. Okay, and just want to, nevermind, okay. And then the, I think there was only one open question, right? Sorry. Oh, one question which you can't answer now, Ms. Azrod, is about the certificate of need and the impact that this current situation might be having on it when you do respond to our comments in writing and speak with your client, if you could get a little more information on that. That, for instance, health and hospitals may be saying that certificates of need as now issued are, you know, kind of good to go or vested or something, and it won't undermine the application. In other words, you can move forward, right? Okay.
We'll certainly address that in our written submission.
Great. Okay, so we didn't get anyone calling in. So then, thank you very much for dialing in and we will do a continued hearing date as soon as we can, okay?
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
I care. New cases, item number 3, 2018-142BZ, 2042346 Road, Queens. So if you are the applicant for that case, please call in. And it is 2018-142BZ, 202042346 Road, Queens.
And it's 646-558-8656.
Should be Dennis George.
Let me text him. Okay, again, we're talking about case number 2018-142BZ, 204-2346 Road, Queens. Dennis George is the applicant. And you should be dialing into our hearing at 646, do we have? I lost the number, 646-558. What's the rest of the number? Oh, there he is. Okay, he's in. Mr. George? There you go. Please state your name when you can hear us. Mr. George, can you hear us?
Looks like his audio is still connecting.
Ah, okay. It's connecting. Really, I don't see.
No, 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 no. He had it there for a second.
And if you can hear us, you can also dial in with your phone. Say the number on the phone, 646, what?
558-8656, I think it was. 8656, yes.
Yeah, thank Kurt. He just hung up again. I think he's coming. No, he didn't.
Still need audio, Mr. George.
If you can't get on with your computer, dial into the number. I think that's what he's doing. The radio, they don't let you have dead airspace for more than 10 seconds, so we need to keep talking.
Want to tell them to recall in or maybe second call it or something, or just give them a few more minutes?
So. Is there a way to? There's Ted. Mr. George, can you hear us? Okay. Is there a way, Kurt, can you write on our screen that we're going to second call this? Or maybe, oh, now he's calling in. There he is. Okay.
Hello?
Mr. George?
Yes.
Hi, thank you.
Issue with my audio. I can see everyone, but I guess I just can't hear anyone.
Okay. Oh, we can see you now.
Okay. I guess this would work.
Okay, so let me swear you in, sir. Raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Okay, please proceed. Please identify yourself for the record.
I'm Dennis George, architect and the applicant. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The, see, this application is seeking variances for the free release of the New York City's own resolution, now that it constructs a zero lot line, single-family house. You know, I was, I heard, I was in the review session and I did hear the comments from the chair and commissioner. And maybe I could just address that, those points. Let's see. On January 21st, I did submit the notice of comment that included, you know, various things like for, let's see, yeah, the plans were updated and the statement of facts was also updated. I did submit a uniqueness study, which was discussed by the Commissioner Chandler. And let's see. The, I guess the issue is with the uniqueness. I'm so a little flustered here.
Take your time. We're, everyone's new to this system. Don't be flustered.
Right. Thank you. Okay. So prior to the construction of the expressway, the site was a rectangular shape of 40 by 100. And, you know, with the, the construction of the expressway, it created this remnant lot which sort of bisected the site down the center, which created the narrowness and, I guess, the irregular shape. And so there's, you know, there's definitely practical difficulties that exist, which which we are asking for, you know, to construct. uh, which we're asking for, uh, you know, to construct a single-family home. Uh, we definitely would need a zero lot, uh, design, a zero lot line building. One, uh, the side yard. And. Sorry, this is. And, uh, yes, to permit a side yard less than minimum for the, this zoning district. And also, uh, to permit a curb cut on, on the site. Okay. And also, uh, to permit a lot area, a lot width that's less than required. Um, there. You know, so one of the issues that you discussed, which is the, you know, the comments from the community board, which was the occupation of the cellar. Um, I guess we could, I could discuss that. I guess the idea was to obviously not create a, uh, the idea of a two-family or something illegal situation, uh, but to provide, you know, a design that would be the occupants would occupy the cellar as a, as a recreation space or storage space. And, uh, uh, the idea that there's access from the garage, I, um, I guess, uh, I guess negates the idea that that would be a second family or illegal situation. Um, if it was on the outside, then I would say, uh, that, you know, that certainly, that idea would sort of be highlighted. See, the, just to go down the list, the photos of the construction equipment and, uh, you know, when I, I guess when the lot was purchased, the neighbor had his equipment on, on site. And I guess we made an agreement with the owner that he, in order to just maintain the site, clean the sidewalks, you know, and, uh, you know, clear the snow and cut the grass, you know, he would occupy the site temporarily while going through this application process. Uh, it did have some construction equipment and more recently, we did erect a sense and he did park his RV on site. And, uh, but this is just a temporary situation and certainly that would go away. Uh, the idea that, you know, the clear of the expressway is, is right there. What usually happens is truckers would, or members of the public and cars would just pass by and deposit some fuel garbage on site. So that was, you know, having him be the caretaker while this is in progress, uh, um, you know, and having to use the site and clean up and maintain the site, uh, was in my best interest, uh, uh, you know, in that sense. But it's a temporary situation and I did discuss this with the, with the committee board. The. See. This seems to be a, I guess, uh, issue with zoning resolution, you know, uh, side yard issues. Um, just against, I guess, uh, the confusion between the interior and the corner lot. Um, I'll take a look at that, can address that in the next submission. Um, I, uh, there is. Let's see, the as of right is incorrect, which dimension, and this, I guess, front yard versus this, the side yard. The front yard is fifteen feet and ten feet.
Hmm.
And the side yard's five and twenty. So that would be addressed in the next submission.
Okay.
See. In terms of going to the plan, I think VR zero zero seven. Um, I guess this was a, I guess my, an error. We should have, um, I guess, modified this section also, which has the extent of the cellar level running, running under the garage level. If we go to Z one zero zero five, uh, this was a response to the committee board's, uh, I guess, highlighting the issue that this cellar level would be, um, you know, construed as an illegal occupancy. Uh, but the idea that you could access it, you know, only the owner could access the garage in order to get into the cellar level. And this is just an accessory, cellar being accessory to the space. Um, I guess, sort of negates the idea that it would be used as an illegal, uh, I guess, occupancy. It also is a matter of convenience, uh, in that sense. And then, um, I guess, the, the staircase leading to the, the roof deck on the garage. I, you know, given the site is very narrow and small and there's not enough outside space, I, my thinking was that it's best to provide and use every available areas on site. And this was, you know, seen, you know, from just what Chair, certainly compared with her. It's, you know, it's comparable to a balcony or a roof deck.
Okay.
So, you know, um, clearly, the site has some major challenges in terms of just the uniqueness. And going back to the as of right zone, which I would go back and, and modify, uh, you know, based on Commissioner Chandler's comments. Um, it actually renders the zoning envelope a lot smaller than, than actually what has drawn. So I'll go back and revise that. Um.
Okay, um, just so we, you know, go, so I guess for, for me, the, I mean, I, I don't have a problem. I don't think anyone does with the, with your conclusion that the site is unique um, and uniquely burdened by its shape. Um, for me, the only missing issue is proving that your zero lot line is not inconsistent or let's say, um, that's an disturbed neighborhood character. I'm not sure what you would do if it did, but, um, but that's something that normally we need to see, so. Um, and I, and I apologize, there were some things that were on your submission that I didn't see, whereas others saw it. Or saw them, but, uh, I don't think you had something to establish the side yard conditions in the neighborhood where there are places where you've got a front yard that's narrow, like what you're proposing along Clearview, or that there are some houses built right to the lot lines. And I think this area was rezoned, so there probably are zero lot line houses because the area was rezoned to eliminate that, but it's, but it's because the predominant, or let's say, common condition was zero lot line. So I think it would be easy enough to establish that. Um, did you want to say something, Commissioner Shonda, about that?
I'm unmuting. I'm sorry, thank you. Yes, I mean, um, the uniqueness study did indicate a lot of pre-1961 non-compliant building and most of these are all attached homes. So these are attached homes with the, the zero lot line conditions are not uncommon in this area. So I think, just looking at the map, I was comfortable with it, but I am, I agree with Madam Chair that maybe some kind of narrative to, uh, for the record would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay. And I don't know if there was anything else. So the, the front yard waiver is the one that I'm concerned about. You need to check the zoning, um, the, the sections of the zoning resolution to make sure that the front yard section is cited in your objection sheet. Nile, because if it's specifically cited, then DOB will consider that a, you know, a missing element and you're going to need to add that as an objection on your objection sheet.
Okay.
Okay, I just not sure if it is. Um. Okay, and then, one last thing, um, this is more out of curiosity. Uh, you said that the stair, I mean, I think the design is very handsome, so I applaud you for such a nice project. I'm, and I, I actually like the idea of the entrance through the garage for it, but I'm trying to understand from your client's perspective, like, how is it used? Like, if I had a, a shop or I was a mechanic or something like that, it would be perfect because you're unloading the lumber or whatever, or your carburetor and you're going right down the stairs to the shop where your tool, tools are, right? So I think, but I'm just curious if that was, that's actually something that was in your program or it really was an effort to get a staircase just off of the outdoor area since there's such a small outdoor area.
Yes, that's, I guess that's the idea was to, I guess, uh, get a, I guess, a, an access to the cellar level. Um, uh, obviously, there would be some other, uh, you know, private, um, I guess, personal use for it. Um, uh, but, uh, it wasn't really, it wasn't discussed. It was just an opportunity to just create an access, you know, I guess, like, from the garage. You're pulling your car and that's another way of getting in. Um, I guess, uh, these days with home office occupation, that could be an opportunity or, uh, but not, not, uh, so, you know, anything that would be, you know, uh, construction-related or, you know, just a home office, I would, I would say.
I think. Or these days, since people buy toilet paper and paper towels by the workload, load that right down into the cellar from your trunk.
You know, that's, that's a good idea in these, in these times, of course. Um, yeah, but, you know, there's, I mean, if you see from the, from the cellar plan, there's certainly a lot of storage. And, uh, you know, groceries are, you know, and, and, uh, things these days are necessary for the stories.
Okay, so there were a few more comments which we don't need to go over that just need to make corrections on the drawings. If you just listen to the review session video, uh, and I'll recognize Commissioner Shonda in a second. If you just listen to the video of the review session and go through those notes when you make your corrections, um, then, not this video, the review session and this one, um, then make those corrections and resubmit and, uh, and it's really the denial from DOB that might be the time-consuming thing. Um, if you don't have the rear yard, I mean, the front yard denial.
Front yard, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay. Uh, any other question? I'm going to recognize Commissioner Shonda.
Um, uh, one question about going back to the committee board, um, that, that, that's, is that a recommendation or is that?
No, it's not required. Th- this is more, you know, concerns always about being with the neighbors and, um, but we are aware that on, with a number of these community boards, they're opposed to all projects on these little lots. So there's only one thing that you could put there other than a park bench that they would be okay with. And the whole purpose, I, I, I look at this kind of a project as a poster child for variances. It's a site where you couldn't build anything. That's where a variance, what a variance is for, to relieve the property owner of the burden that's imposed by government regulation. So, um, it'd be nice if the community board changed their minds. That's the thing that you need to address specifically. They've already had their opportunity to hear this. And, um, and that's all that's required. Any wanted to add, Commissioner Shonda?
Yeah, um, I, I may have misheard it. Um, did you say that you would need a permit for a curb cut?
Um, that was recommended, uh, so I don't have to come back to the, uh, to the board. And, let's see, yes.
Oh, why? Is your curb cut not a complying curb cut?
Well, there are, let's see, there is, uh, well, there's no curb cut currently and so there will be a new curb cut. I think, um, I may have had a discussion with someone, uh, who recommended, uh, you know, including the curb cut as part of this application. Uh, but it certainly isn't as of right, uh, you know, off of the expressway.
Hmm. So if it's an as of right, so, so this is for you, as long as you're going to DOB for your, um, front yard objection. Check with DOB whether you need a curb cut location objection because there are, of course, limitations on how far corner and on some streets, there are limitations on how many curb cuts or the distance between them and so on. I don't know what they are on, on Clearview, so check that out because it is something that we can, we waive. Um, and if you needed it, be shamed to have to come back.
Okay, I see, okay.
All right, great. So, um, now I'm going, there is. Are you, someone is in the waiting room, uh, that might be Mr. Euler, actually, uh, with a phone number five oh five. So I'm going to admit that person, um, and that may be someone who's speaking on this project.
Hello? Please turn off YouTube.
Yes, it's, I did.
Hi, Mr. Euler, how are you?
Okay, I'm fine.
Hmm.
Oh, is, oh, am I on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, my name is Henry Euler and I'm First Vice President of the Auburndale Improvement Association. I did send in my letter of April 2nd with two photos attached. Um, as you know, the Civic Association is opposed to the granting of these variances. Um, when Mr. George came to the committee hearing, he explained, uh, his case to us. And, um, he told us he, he would need three variances. Uh, one because he doesn't have the minimum forty-foot wide lot. Another because he doesn't have the minimum thirty-eight-hundred-square-feet lot. And that he needs, uh, he doesn't have the side yards that are required. Now, I know this is a corner lot and it has different, um, regulations, but that was not explained to us at the meeting. We didn't focus so much on the cellar. I mean, I'm a member of the community board and I'm not speaking for the community board, but, um, we, when the case came up, uh, this concern about the proposed cellar turning into a, uh, uh, illegal conversion was a, was not the main focus of the conversation. Mr. George did not attend the full board meeting. So, um, you know, that, we didn't have the advantage of hearing his point of view on that. Uh, we, we do feel that in this neighborhood, there are no other single-family detached two-and-a-half-story homes that have a zero lot line. Um, and, uh, we feel that this, uh, granting of this, these variances would set a precedent and, um, encourage development of undersized lots in the area. So that's why we really object to it. Um, we also were surprised to read in Mr. George's statement of facts and findings that he said that the general character, uh, of the neighborhood is single-story, two-story and two-story with an attic on an average lot size of twenty by hundred dimension. Well, that's simply not the case. If you look at the Department of Finance tax map that Mr. George submitted, the lots around his lot are mostly forty by hundred or larger. And most of the lots in that neighborhood are similar. Now, of course, there are homes, there are, uh, homes that are attached homes on narrow lots. And there are also, um, uh, detached, semi-detached homes and detached homes. And I guess that's why city planning decided to designate this as an R31 zone because of the various types of homes that are there. Um, our, my Civic Association has a complaint about the, uh, storage that, uh, Mr. George has on the lot at the present time. Uh, for over a year now, there's been this, um, landscaping equipment, um, parked on the lot. We asked him at the, I asked him at the, uh, committee hearing to please have that removed because we've been getting complaints about it from people that live right near him. And, uh, he said he would attend to that and it's still there after over a year. And then we have this RV trailer, or house trailer, as I call it, parked on the lot as well. It's a terrible eyesore. Now, he did put a chain link fence around the lot, but it's still visible to the community. And it's really not right. So we were. So we were, we would ask that something be done about that as well. And that's my statement.
Okay. I appreciate always you attending these hearings, either in person, under normal circumstances, through your letters, and especially now during these hard times, through the video or the call-in. I have a question about, though, the association's opposition to development of the small lots. So, you know, so these are, these are almost always lots that have been left vacant as a result of some act by the city, like, in this case, it looks like there was a foreclosure, so the city takes it because the taxes haven't been paid. And then, the lot itself, and the several lots that we see along ClearView, were created by cutting the ClearView Expressway. So what that ends up doing, effectively, is taking a person's property without compensating them for the taking, right? And so that's the whole point of a variance, where nothing can be done on the property at all without the right to vary a little bit of the zoning resolution. And in this situation, the scope of the variance is quite limited, because if the site were a little bit bigger, he would have been able to build as of right, because undersized lots are grandfathered under the zoning. So you could proceed, as long as you can comply with the side yard regulations and so on. Corner lots are particularly burdened, because they have so many yard regulations, front, very wide side yards, all of that kind of thing. So I don't really understand the thinking of the civic with respect to property rights and fairness to property owners who are saddled with properties they can't use for anything. And let's just say, you know, you could argue, well, we'll sell it to the neighbor. Well, the neighbor doesn't buy it, want to buy it, you know? The neighbor said, we'll take it for $200, but that's, that's also a taking property, right?
Yes, but, you know, you also have to understand that the purchaser has to also be aware of the limitations of the property. He bought the property, he's an architect, he knows the rules and regulations of the zoning regulations that we have. And he needs to also, you know, be aware of his, his possibilities as well. And, yes.
So I just want to say, though, that, you know, whoever the last purchaser of the property is, purchased it from someone, who purchased it from someone, right? And the person, for whom the original demolition, in this case, this is a very extreme version, the city demolished the house that sat on the property to build the expressway. So that property owner was then deprived of any viable use of their property, and then sold it, obviously, at a deep discount to the neighbor, who held on to it with the hope that something would happen, and then sold it to somebody who hoped that something would happen, right? And the something is the right to use it for something other than a park bench. And it's, you know, it doesn't become a free public park. I don't want to belabor this, but, but the
I understand.
The, the other thing is, there are, in what we look at, when we look at a variance, it's, we're looking at the study area, and the study area is, I believe, the uniqueness map is, what is it, 1,000 feet or 400 feet? Shows the attached, it's, it's not even that far away, right? On the next block, it shows a whole row, a big row, of attached houses. So an attached house is the same as a zero-lot line, and we also see some attached, some zero-lot lines, actually just on the same block as the subject site. I, I'm just raising this because your civic is very active, and so I think it's only fair to respond to your concerns and the reason why, why we're sympathetic to this project.
I understand.
Commissioner Shanda?
I'm, I think with regards to the question of the rezoning, yes, there was a rezoning in this area, and if you look at the rezoning map, the areas where there was more of a context with regards to the R-3X, where rezoned to R-3X. The subject site was not rezoned, it remained as R-3-1. And, and in this portion of our 3-1 area, there are a lot of attached and semi-detached homes. So a zero-lot line building is not unique to this. It, it is there in abundance in this area, and also some in the R-3X. And I know for a fact, when we do, when we used to do rezonings in city planning, not every building fitted into the perfect R-3X envelope. There were some that missed, because we figured they were grandfathered. So when one looks at this map, it's not all single-family detached homes. That's all I would like to raise. And the zoning map, way it was being framed, has been framed to make sure the R-3X is separate from the R-3N, R-3-1. So we need to keep that in mind also, Madam Chair.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Euler, for calling in.
Thank you for listening.
Mr. George, is there, oops, sorry, is there anything you want to add? Hold on, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I think that's, that's pretty clear, what I need to do. And I'll go through the comments, the review session, and respond.
Great, thank you very much. So we will send you the continued hearing date and your admission date in a couple of days, okay?
Okay, thank you very much, be safe.
And move on to the next, then?
Item number 42019187BZ205 Bricktown Way, Staten Island, that's the PCE. So the Office of Roth group should be calling in. Once again, 2019187BZ205 Bricktown Way, Staten Island.
Okay, just admitted Todd.
Okay, I was just texting.
Good morning.
There he is, okay. Good morning, where are you?
Good morning. Todd Dale from Roth group, Roth group inspector, need to be sworn in, I think?
Yes. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do affirm. So we did hear the review session, it seemed as if there were minimal comments with respect to the massage licenses and the timing. Just to clarify for the board, this application, we did respond to the notice of comments in October. The site did open for business the end of 2019. They are obviously not open now. I did speak with the operator, and she confirms that the masseuses they have are New York State licensed. I don't know how the board wants to treat this with respect to legalization, because of the timing of it opening after the notice of comments, but before the hearing, and getting the licenses, but we can respond and submit however the board prefers.
Just submit the licenses, if you can get ahold of them in this remote way.
I think what we might be able to do is go to the online New York State Licensing Bureau, and at least, we won't have the fancy copy of the licenses, but we might be able to print out, you know, proof of what the current status is of the masseuses, but we can get those in.
That'll work.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know if there are any other questions?
No other issues? Anything from other commissioners? Anything, anything? Okay, so then I'll just ask whether there are any members of the public who want to speak on this item. This is 2019-187BZ205 Bricktown Way, Staten Island. If you want to speak about this, call 646-558-8656. Give it a few seconds, and then we can move on to the next. Thanks a lot, Mr. Dale.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we can move on to the next one.
Okay, items number five and six, 2017-265BZ and 2020-2BZ 318-320, 54th Street, Brooklyn. The applicant is Emily Simons.
Okay, and we're hearing 2020-2BZ 318-320, 54th Street, Brooklyn, and also case number 2017-265-BZ, right? And you should call in 646-558-8656. This is the firm of Emily Simons.
Yeah, Justine Miller.
Okay. I think what we need to do is, with each of these applications, the project manager should be calling in, calling their applicant right before the hearing, to make sure they're aware we're on. So let's kind of add that to our protocol.
She is aware, she's been listening, actually, she sent me, yeah. She, I don't know why she hasn't joined, but she is listening to this.
So Emily, please dial 646-558-8656. Commissioner Sheta, I'm unmuting you.
Usually, I'm viewing the YouTube while I'm, like, on the Zoom. Usually, it takes, like, 30 seconds if somebody, like, raises hand like that. It happens on Zoom now, it takes most likely 30 seconds, half a minute, to show on YouTube. Somebody's listening on YouTube, we should give him at least, like, half a minute.
Yes, that's what we've been doing. We've been, we're aware of the 30-second time delay.
Yep.
Okay, again, Ms. Simons, please dial in 646-558-8656.
The information about the meeting ID and password is up on the screen, so.
He's just dialed in. There we go, she's in. I think. I saw her, oh, we lost her. Here we go. Take a second, so when you can hear us, please state your name.
Hello?
Hi, great.
Hi, I'm sorry, I've never done this before, and I do apologize for, I'm old, I'm old. I'm not very tense. I'd like to say good morning to the, to Chair Commissioner, Promada and the commissioners. My name is Emily Simons of the Law Office of Emily Simons, PLC. And I'd also like to thank you and your staff for, for all the work that's gone into enabling these applications to move forward in this difficult time. I greatly appreciate, this has been a rather long and tortured and strange application. And
Someone turn off their rock and roll. Sorry, we need to swear you in, though.
Oh, okay, I'm so sorry, my
Yeah, I was just waiting for it. All right, Emily, let me swear you in. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do, indeed.
Okay, you can proceed now, Emily.
Okay, I guess, respond to the comments of the review session.
There weren't really anything, I don't think there was comments.
I would, I would like to respond, I would like to thank you, first of all, all of the commissioners for their complimentary comments on the application. 73-53 certainly is a strange application. The one comment that I did want to address was, had to do with the sign. In the prior variance, that was granted in 1981, 226-81-BZ, there was explicit language regarding the sign. And with all due respect, at the last hearing on the variance, my understanding from the chair was that this language, which says, "It, in the rezo, the roof business sign may remain so long as it's maintained accessory to an active functioning occupancy within the building for the use indicated on said sign." And that is why it's included. My client would like to, very much like, to use this sign as an accessory business sign to Lucky Window Products, the Venetian blind assembly. I do understand that it is ultimately a DOB issue, but I would greatly appreciate it if the renewed variance would continue to have the same language as the 1981 variance that it is renewing.
Okay. I mean, I think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, an accessory business sign is permitted, and this would be grandfathered under kind of probably all versions of things. So I don't think there's really an issue with continuing that, right? Commissioner Shanda's making head movements, I want her to speak, okay?
Yes, I agree with you, Madam Chair, it's grandfathered, so, as an accessory sign, so that should be okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if there's anything else, anybody have any other comments? I don't think there are any open issues on any of these cases, right? So, in that case, are we good, everybody? Ms. Benke, are you good with this? We need her to unmute, I'm unmuting her.
Yes, I'm fine, thanks.
Great, okay. I just needed to make sure we didn't have any open secret issues. So in that case, I would, first of all, I need to ask if there are any public speakers, being reminded by Kurt, that I need to ask on your screen. This is for application number 2020-2BZ 318-320, 54th Street, Brooklyn. Please dial 646-558-8656, if you would like to speak on application 2020-2BZ 318-320, 54th Street, Brooklyn. It's also application 2017-265BZ for the same address, and we'll give you, as Commissioner Sheta remarked, 30 seconds to dial in, 646-558-8656. Okay. Okay, then, so I would like to make, therefore, a motion to close.
Chair Promada?
Hi.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Hi.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Hi.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
This application's been closed.
This application and the other application.
Both applications, 2017-265BZ and 2020-2BZ have both been closed.
Okay, so.
On for decision.
Ms. Simons, we'll put this on for a decision date. There are no submissions on this, at the signage for the resolution, so just alerting our council about the signage comment, okay?
Okay, thank you all very much and stay safe and well.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Okay, so this concludes the public hearing for April 7, 2020. The 10 a.m. session will resume at 10 p.m., 2 p.m., sorry, 10 p.m., 2 p.m. with calendar number 2019-205BZ485 Van Cinderaun Avenue, Brooklyn. That will be the only case that we will be hearing at the 2 p.m. session with the review session and public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, see you later.
Thanks, everybody. Yeah, bye.
Bye.